We're going to start in two minutes. Good evening, I'm calling this regular meeting of the village board to order at 7:12. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with section 19.83 and 19.84 of Saskatchewan statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call is showing all trustees are present. I'd like to have you stand for the pledge allegiance and for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone into this law with liberty and justice for her.
Thank you. We are now on to the president's report, and I've got some prepared comments. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to share what has been going on since my last president's report update of two weeks ago. This past week was very emotional for our country and for our community as we became aware of tragic events that impacted us all. From the 24th anniversary of the terrorist attack on 9/11, to the fatal shooting, a school shooting at Evergreen High School located just outside of Denver, to the senseless stabbing of a young Ukrainian refugee on a mass transit train in Charlotte, to the high-profile political assassination of Charlie Kirk at Utah Valley University. I wish we knew the reasons why, but it's apparent that we have too much hate in our nation, in our community, and their moral compass is lacking. This past week was very emotional, at least for me, as I look inside and reflect on what I can do different to affect positive change and to make a difference. I will personally strive to listen more, to have more empathy, to engage in more meaningful conversations and not silencing dissent, and most importantly, to act with positive intent. As absent that, we will never move forward in our nation nor in our community. Again, it was a very emotional week. It has also been a very busy couple of weeks in the village. Row construction is nearing completion, as are the water main repairs on County Line Road. The resealing and striping of the village hall and library parking lot are complete, and it looks great. The sidewalk repairs on Main Street are now complete as well. At the plan commission this past week, the plan commission took action to move forward with the 2050 Plan Neighborhood Meetings along with taking action on what a multifamily housing policy would look like. Both of these matters will be in the agenda for action at the next village board meeting. This past week, we also heard some great news from FEMA as President Trump officially announced a presidential disaster declaration for our area and approved federal aid to help recover from the severe storms and flooding in August. And to apply for FEMA disaster assistance for those impacted, please go to disasterassistance.gov. And speaking of the disaster event, this evening, we are going to act on a proclamation to officially recognize the emergency responders and staff of the village of Germantown for their dedicated service during the August 2025 flooding emergency. As I said before, our response and recovery efforts were best in class, and I wouldn't change anything in what the village did. More on the topic of water. The Germantown Area Chamber of Commerce is hosting a water seminar tomorrow night from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at Old Germantown. This event is open to the public, and the presentation will be done by Washington County and will be a high-level informational seminar on stormwater, water quality, erosion control, et cetera. Before I wrap up and in being as transparent as possible, I do want to provide a final update on a review that I authorized to be conducted by independent and outside counsel, the Von Bierston Law Firm. They have now completed their detailed audit of the various transactions related to the village center development. After speaking with all the parties involved in those transactions and in reviewing the related records, the reviewing attorney concluded that they have found no information or evidence of statutory ethical violations by anyone, and I repeat, by anyone involved in the transactions, including the members of the village board, village officials, and the village's outside consultants. The attorney concluded that the village board acted based on the information and evidence that was provided to make reasonable discretionary decisions which were without ethical complications. As this matter is now closed, it is my sincere hope that this determination will help lower the temperature with respect to this development, allowing all parties to focus on the merits of any future development and not on personal attacks. In closing, I'm looking forward to our meeting this evening as we work together to move Germantown forward. Thank you. We are now on to item A, the proclamation recognizing the emergency responders and staff of the village of Germantown for their dedicated service during the August 2025 flooding emergency. And I just want to read the proclamation, and I believe in the board packet, everybody had a copy of that. But for those on WebEx and those that are in the audience, the proclamation says, whereas on August 9 through 10, 2025, the village of Germantown experienced historic rainfall in excess of 10 inches, resulting in widespread flooding, significant damage to property, and hazardous conditions throughout the community. And whereas during the time of crisis, village emergency responders and staff demonstrated extraordinary dedication, professionalism, and courage in protecting life, property, and the welfare of residents. And whereas the Germantown Police Department, Germantown Fire Department, Department of Public Works, utility staff, and other village employees responded swiftly and worked tirelessly under challenging and dangerous conditions to provide emergency assistance, maintain essential services, and ensure public safety. And whereas these efforts reflect on the unwavering commitment to public service and embody the spirit of resilience and the unity that defines the Germantown community. And whereas the village board and the residents of Germantown recognize that the actions of these individuals mitigated the impact of the flooding disaster and safeguarded our community during one of its most difficult moments. Now therefore, I, Robert Soderbergh, village president of Germantown, on behalf of the village board and the residents of Germantown, do hereby complain or proclaim our deepest gratitude and appreciation to the emergency responders and the staff of the village of Germantown for their heroic service and commitment during the August 2025 flooding emergency. In testimony thereof, I adhere unto, set my hand, and cause the village of the village of Germantown to be affixed, done at the clerk's office in the state of Wisconsin, village of Germantown, Washington County, the 15th day of September 2025. I'd like to give this to our village administrator, Steve Kriklo, and thank him for his service.
On behalf of everyone. And if I could, I'd just like to say very quickly, on behalf of the village employees who participated in the response to the storm, very happy to accept this proclamation. And what we'll plan to do with this is to rotate it around the public works facility, the police department, the fire department, as well as village hall, so that the employees who earn this and who deserve this proclamation are able to see it and understand the appreciation from the village board. So, thank you very much.
Great. Again, job well done. Moving on to item five, announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee and department reports. Trustee Kaminsky.
There'll be a special meeting of the public works committee on Tuesday, the 23rd, it's next week, at 5:30 PM in this room.
Trustee Rick Miller.
There will also be a special meeting of the general government finance committee on that same night, the 23rd, at 6:30 PM, or directly after the public works meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Buck Cuts.
The next public safety meeting is regularly scheduled Monday, October 6th, at 6:00 PM in this room. We are trying to put together a special meeting to go over the budget, tentatively looking at the 30th, but that will be on the website once we have that settled.
Great, thank you. Would any other trustees or chairs like to comment on any events? Trustee Jen Miller.
Thank you. Our next meeting for economic development will be Tuesday, October 14th, and that will be at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item six, citizen input. Would anybody in the community like to come forward and speak? And please keep your comments to four minutes. Please keep your comments to four minutes. Thank you. Good evening and welcome.
Oops, now it works. Okay. I'm gonna quote, I'm here tonight to talk to the board personally from the citizens that I have talked to for many months through the years I've lived here. This is a quote from Charlie Kirk. "Policies get put in place when citizens and boards don't challenge our future and the cost of it." Okay? And that's what's being done. We need to, why we come up here and talk, we're challenging our future and the cost and asking you as a board to do the same thing. If you don't challenge what's put before you, it's going to hurt the citizens completely. And I had an interesting conversation with one of the people that does plan all this for us, and I asked them why we have to look at all these plans. Every week, we see these schedules, these plans, everything. And the people, 68% do not want what they're presenting. And I said, why? And you know, I was surprised at his answer. He said, your board voted for this. So I thought, okay, I sat down, I actually walked out because I was upset, and I thought, what did he just say? He said, you group of people are responsible for the debt we're in, for the decisions that have been made, for the building, for the selling of properties, the buying of properties, and pushing the plans of several people that are above you for our community. And we do have a plan, and I would like you to realize that the decisions you have made in the past have put this village in a very, just a predicament of serious debt. And I mean, we're all asking you, not everybody here, but people I talk, every day when I go anywhere, I ask people, are you a German? I walk right up to people and ask them if they're a citizen. And I ask them what their opinion is, and it's fairly surprising. And I'm not wrong, and I'm not knowledgeable of what I'm doing or what people are saying to me. And I would like you to realize that the decisions you've made in the past have put us in the predicament. And they, the financial, I feel you're being somewhat manipulated by the people presenting these plans to you. And I would like you to have a challenge to these people and say no. You have the right, it's up to you, you're the power behind what happens in this village, and you can say no. Don't be afraid to say, we don't like your plan, we're not voting for it. And because these plans can financially hurt the residents, and it doesn't, we don't want our rights taken away by voting against us. And you can say, no, we want a better plan. That, you can say that to these people. And residents are asking you to be wise and not bow down to several people who are making the plans for this whole village of 21,000 people and taking our money. And we can have a plan. We can have a plan, now it doesn't work again. We can have a plan, but you don't have to vote for that particular plan. You can change the plan, you can say no to the plan, okay? And you are here to represent your constituents, not developers. Our debt was put on your decisions, that's what I was told. You made the vote, you did this to the village, okay? And a lot of citizens want our tax group to post the names of how the people are voting for these major decisions. You don't, don't go along to get along, okay? You're not here to please any one person. You're here to help the village. And the 250 Plan is just a plan, and I called the state on this, and you have the right to say no. You have the right to ask any questions you want. So, one last thing from Charlie, I love the guy, he's a brilliant brain, I love to listen to people like that. Private property is a right and manifests our physical labor and existence and what we create with our money for our families and our future. Please remember that when you're voting, okay? Vote for us and for our future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak tonight? Good evening and welcome.
My name is Dominic D'Amico, I live at West 165 North 10603 Wagon Trail here in Germantown. I'm here on behalf of other families that live on Wagon Trail. We were informed this week that the fire hydrant, one of the fire hydrants that the, I believe it was the northeast corner of Old Farm and Wagon Trail was going to be pulled out and replaced, set back farther, which means they're going to dig up and tear up new concrete and new asphalt because the hydrant's too close to the curb. It runs, I mean, it's budding right up to the concrete, which normally none of them are. So, wasting money there. The reason I start with this is because the village of Germantown, not this board in specific, I've been here for 40 years, the village of Germantown has a bad habit of not paying attention to the details. Using this project just as an example, not worried about the larger project, when this project started, we were told it was going to start after Memorial Day. Great. Then we were told after Memorial Day that it was going to be after 4th of July. Then we got a knock on the door at the end of June saying, the contractor said they could start early, we're tearing up your road next week. I had my camper in my driveway because it needed repairs. So, the road was gone, I kindly requested Wolf Paving to put more gravel so I could at least get my camper out and park it on the side of the road, and they obliged. Again, these are all first-world problems, don't get me wrong. After that, then we had to drive to the mailbox, we had to drive to the post office because we weren't getting any mail. They couldn't deliver the mail because the road was all torn up. Then they decided to put up mailboxes two blocks away, no big deal, who doesn't need a walk, right? So, we were doing that. When they put up the mailboxes, they put them up in the wrong order. So, instead of the mailman coming and dropping the stuff off on the wrong, on the wrong side, he had to go turn around and go back and do it in reverse because they weren't put up right to begin with. Again, it's a first-world problem, but it's a lack of planning. Now we were told there's been no work done. I know it was delayed because of the sump pump discharge, it was delayed a week or so because they had to make arrangements to get all that pulled off the curb. Then we were told that they couldn't do it the second layer because of the fact that the manhole extensions or rings had to be replaced. So, they did one on the north, on the south end of Wagon Trail, they haven't touched another one since. There hasn't been anybody from construction or anything there for two and a half weeks. I saw one village of Germantown truck down by the pickleball courts at the park. I didn't see anything, nobody was talking, nobody was calling. The only reason I got this message was because we sent an email wanting to know what the status was. We had no information what was going on. So, again, no planning. Print out copies for the residents on Germantown, take them to the post office, and have them put with all the other mail that goes to there so they get to put in their mailboxes. Now, mail delivery's back to normal, everything's fine, but now we have to slalom ski around the orange barrels that are still out in the middle of the road. Now, if you have a large truck or you're pulling a trailer, it's a trick. All right, I, like I say, I'm not blaming anybody for anything because it is what it is. Again, it's first-world problems, but it's the lack of looking at details, and we all know, any project you do, especially a government project, the devil is in the details, and this village is horrendous at checking out the details of any project. Nobody's asking the right questions, and nobody's planning for any possible, now you can't plot for every possible problem that you could have, but, you know, people are parking on the side streets when they couldn't get through the road. Again, the devil is in the details. Please mark these problems down so that the next project, they're looked at and said, oh yeah, we have to do this, 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 and this, so we don't run into that problem. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak tonight? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Scott Hefley, W159 and 10514 Old Farm Road, Germantown. Yes, I run into the wagon trail every day. It's a crossing path for me, it's, you gotta go slow over the bumps. It's been, good thing I have a car that handles well, you have to slalom ski through there. So, I hope there's at least an impetus to get it done. They're suffering way worse than I am. I don't live on wagon trail, I'd be pretty unhappy if I did. All right, so tonight, a little bit on the budget, there's a famous economics professor that said the problem that's out there is too few resources being chased by too many wants. That sounds like the budget in a nutshell for us. I missed some meetings. Then I went back and looked at them, and I found our capital borrowing just for public safety, public works, and recreation is apparently $13.5 million. Where is that coming from? Well, Mr. Hefley, there's stuff in there and we'll be talking about in that. I certainly hope so. We probably, we have to do some borrowing, but 13 and a half million without all the departments in there, that sounds a little scary. Maybe we're pushing 20 million. I hope this board has an idea of what to do about that, but it is a big number. Our typical borrowing has been three and a half to four million the four years I've been coming to meetings, and now we're looking at 14 million. I know there's some things that we have to address, but I hope everyone takes that seriously because we all know who's paying for that, all of us. The, another thing with the budget is, I have to double check, but I looked in whatever I had for the budget, looks like there's, we have a $1 million placeholder to buy a property not for sale by people who don't want to sell to us, and I'm talking about the strip mall over there by where maybe previous administration wanted a lift station. Okay, I don't know if you should put any lift stations there based on what happened with the flood. I certainly want to put in something lower elevation than we had. We had to sandbag the way it was. So, why do we have $1 million placeholders in a budget that's challenging for things that the people won't sell to us, okay? I've been coming to meetings for years, they're not selling to us at any price, so why do we put placeholders in the budget? We need a real budget with real information. All right? You want to hear about a quick way to raise some money for the village? You can sell the Groznick property and try to get 1.1 million, and sell the flower source for 2.4, if you could get it, 3.5 million. If you didn't get 3.5 million, that'd be something, wouldn't it? You could pay it on the loans, and then we're not landlords anymore. Just an idea, money for the budget. It was brought up at GGF, so relevant meetings taped, I brought it up there, and I think it was a good discussion, and there's a plan, and that's good. Let's get some more information out there to the residents. Doesn't hurt. As far as the Coon subdivision, I was on utility advisory, we discussed it. The sewer laterals are fine, they talked about putting in water, it's a later agenda item, it's not on tonight's budget. You don't need to put water in there, the people don't want it. We never even surveyed them to see if they wanted it, but certainly the trustees have gotten plenty of information from all those people saying, leave me alone, I've been on a well for 60 years. Don't just put in infrastructure to put in infrastructure. We do not have the money in the water utility and sewer utility, and somebody can explain it to me if we do. We do not, especially in the water utility, we have no money there that we would spend a million, million and a half dollars to put in something no one's asking for. That seems like, like the gentleman said earlier, maybe doing things we shouldn't be doing and not paying attention to the details. Don't give people what they don't want. That's real simple. They like well water. Don't give them water for municipal, whether they hook up or not. That's just a dumb expense. And then my final thing- Then my final thing is, I do support the two people being brought forth for the Economic Development Commission. I knew the two previous people on the Economic Development Commission well. I know these people even better. They will do a fine job. They are, have expertise that can be used. One is involved with the school board and involved in the community. Another one runs their own consulting business as a project manager and an architect. I think those are great people to have on a commission with the rest of us that have our own areas of expertise, and I think that's a great idea. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak tonight? Would anybody else like to come forward and speak tonight? Anyone on WebEx?
We received an email from the Schneiders. Said, "Hello, we are writing in, we are writing in our concern for the discussions on all the recording of the meetings. We have asked for this to happen for the last couple of years. Nothing happened. Great to see it will be discussed at both meetings tonight." Sorry. "The residents need to have all meetings shown on cable." "Yes, we said cable. This is just like the cellphone issue that was discussed already. Many on the board assume that everyone has a cellphone. Well, it was pointed out by some that not everyone has one nor wants to either. As far as the cable, we have no issues with the meetings being shown this way. The meetings have improved a lot over time. The only issue is the microphones. Not everyone has them turned on and speaks into them. Please don't assume that everyone has a computer, cellphone, or a device to get YouTube on their TVs, nor do we want to sit and watch a village meeting, which can sometimes last for hours, on a cellphone and/or the computer. You on the board should not be telling residents what to use to watch and listen to any meetings. Why should we have to buy another device to watch the meetings on the TV? This should be provided by the village, which is covered by our taxes. Yes, we all have a budget and stick to it." Does the village stick to the budget? Not really. If you did, you would not have to make cuts and/or rob Peter to pay Paul either. Tired of hearing we have no money in the village. Think about it. Think about all the property purchases. You want us to open our checkbooks all the time to pay for your wants and needs. Then it is time the village does not, does what the village, what the residents want to watch and listen to any of the meetings. Plus, all these meetings need to be broadcast for everyone to watch and listen to, not just the four meetings that has been only allowed. Most of you on the board agreed to purchase the different properties in the village when the residents were mostly against it. Believe it was a total of $9 million so far, will most likely cost more in the future. Did anyone get the information from Spectrum about how many residents do have the cable hookup yet? Nothing has been said about this yet. Here is a big question you all need to ask yourself. We, the village board, government, are going to tell the residents what they should use to watch and listen to the meetings. Don't think so. We know from watching the meetings, know how some feel about the cable system, but when you are saying everyone has a computer and/or cellphone, just so you know, not everyone does. Yes, this was pointed out at different meetings, too. Unless you want to get a lot of phone calls, emails, and whatever else they chose to voice their opinions to you. We believe that you should give the residents what they want, not what you want. Thank you for listening to what we have to say on this topic. Yes, we'll be watching on cable the meetings. The Schneiders.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else wants to speak? We're going to move on to item seven, appointments to boards, committees, or commissions. Item A, Administrative Appeals Review Board. And we've got a recommendation for our colleague, Jolene Peeper, to fill a vacant seat. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to fill the Administrative Appeals Review Board with trustee Jolene Peeper.
We have discussion. No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Want to oppose?
Am I allowed to vote? I don't know. Those can't.
You are. Of course you are.
I'll vote aye.
Okay. We are now on item B, Economic Development Commission. We've got two open positions for one, they're filling positions due to resignations. One is for Melanie Smythe and one for Jeff Royer. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the Economic Development Commission to appoint Melanie Smythe and Jeff Royer to the Economic Development Commission. Thank you.
I'll second.
We have discussion. I'm Warren.
I would like to delay this for at least a month. Just concerned that the candidates don't have the type of experience that the, that an economic committee would require. For example, no experience in private and public funding, finance and banking, real estate, job and business creation. I just don't feel like the current, the current candidates that are proposed have the right experience, and I'd like to give us a chance to look at some other options.
Trustee Baum.
I would agree with that, and I also have a very extreme problem with a, the hostility of one of those applicants with other members on this, on that board. I don't think it's good to have them in the same committee.
Further discussion. Trustee Jan Miller.
To the best of my knowledge, these two people came forward. As it was stated, Jeff Royer has a business degree. He has a seat on the school district board. And Kim Higginbotham resigned from the Economic Development Board because of her work. She, it accelerated, as well as Danny Yegi. She resigned as well because of her work that is being accelerated where she has to travel. So these two people, Melanie Smythe came forward. She does consulting work. She's worked for major corporations. She also has architectural experience. So I'm not sure what else we need on the economic development, but when people come forward and actually apply, I think that's great. And it's not easy to get volunteers. We have waited a couple of months because we missed putting something forward on the village board for exception, and now we're a month behind. And we, we only had four people, which was a quorum for the economic development this past month. And I would greatly appreciate if everyone accepted this, as well as it being President Soderbergh's request.
Further discussion. Trustee Warren.
Just like to clarify that we don't select volunteers just because they volunteer. There's other qualifications that are required.
Further discussion. Trustee Rick Miller.
Do we have a motion to postpone?
No, we don't. We're just, we're discussing. We're discussing right now. Yeah, my position is, I have no problem with these two candidates. I think they're very capable. The one candidate is replacing a previous or a school board director that had to transition off due to work capacity issues. Melanie Smythe, who I know, I think she's more than highly qualified. She's a architect. She does, has her own consulting business for the last 30 years. She is involved in a wide variety of engagements from community, from urban planning, public meeting facilitation, design services, traffic studies. She's a resident of our community. I have no problem moving forward with that. Everyone is aware of the inappropriate email that went out to, by staff to this group that never should have gone out about trying to influence a potential vote. That never should have occurred. Again, this is, I feel very comfortable with these two appointments. I would not want to delay this. We've got our existing, when you look at the existing mix of the Economic Development Commission, we've got trustee Jan Miller as the chair, Kristen Borst, Scott Heffley, who's very capable, Jim Sejwick, he's on the, on the commission as well, and also the executive director, Gillette Kirpin. So by adding these two candidates, I think we will have a well-rounded commission. Trustee Pete Peeper.
Can we take these two separately, please?
Can we?
You can do a motion to split the question.
I make a motion to split the question.
Second.
Good discussion. Saying none, all those in favor to split the motion? Say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, two. And I'm going to oppose two. That's three. I don't think we need to. Okay, we're, that motion carries. We're back to the original motion where we're going to be splitting it up, and we're going to go with Melanie Smythe first. Discussion, I entertain a motion. You have a motion. You have a motion, okay.
I'm just, for discussion. Back in the day when I was on the Economic Development Committee, everybody on that committee had a vested interest business-wise in the Village of Germantown. They were business owners, or they were from the Chamber of Commerce. I think we, she's on the board, I presume. This is entirely different makeup of what the board used to be. So that's why I am, I share some of trustee Bob's bafflement. But if we did postpone this, who's going to find better people? How are we going to promote it? How did we promote this? Do we just wait for people to step up? Or did we say, "We're looking through the Chamber of Commerce, I would promote it"? That we're looking for members?
We promoted this on the villagers' website, specific for this.
Through the chamber or just on our website?
On our, on our website.
Because the chamber was very instrumental in bringing people to us back 11, 12 years ago. It was a very kind of active board back then, and then it kind of petered out.
So we've got a, we've got a motion for Melanie Smythe on the table. Further discussion. Trustee Baum.
Trustee Kaminsky, you mentioned that the Economic Development Committee petered out. I think most of us have been on that committee one time or another. And I'm not sure that committee has any true perspective, true direction from this village board. They have a couple of things that I understand are from the 2050 Plan, but there's not a true direction of what we want them to do. Trustee Peeper was the last chair of that, and she was trying to do something, but it was never directed by this committee, this board. We have not told them what they should be doing. So I think if we take another month, we should also figure out what we, the village board, truly want this committee to be doing. Because right now, I've been, I've been to most of the meetings, and I've even heard one of the members say, "I don't know what we're supposed to be doing." And I question why the two people actually did leave.
Yeah, I don't think, I guess my, my comment to that would be, I don't think the village board gives direction to Parks and Rec. We don't give direction to public safety. We don't give direction to GGF. So why would we make an exception and give direction to economic development in terms of what the village board wants them to do? I feel very comfortable that they, as a group, will work on their own agenda, just like public safety, and they'll take action that'll filter up to the village board for, for action and discussion. Again, you know, I, I want to read an email from one of my colleagues here, from David Baum. It was dated September 8th, says Jan. And to your point, I just want to, I'm just kind of reinforcing something. I don't think the current makeup of our EDC has the capacity or the knowledge to undertake a true mission of Economic Development Commission. It has, it never has and never will as a group of volunteers. If we want true economic development effort, professionals need to be brought in. Otherwise, we need to accept Bob's token beautification program, a celebrate Germantown program, and tweaking the pre-existing load pool program, and stop looking for meaningful outcomes. Sincerely, Dave Baum. I just, again, I just want to say that we do have two trustees on this commission. Jan Miller, Kristen Borst, and we have three citizens, Scott Heffley, Jim Sejwick, and the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, Gillette Kirpin. And I think those people do have the capacity and the knowledge to undertake a true mission. And what I'm asking this village board to do is to accept both Melanie Smythe and Jeff Royer to fill those open positions. And I don't think there's anything nefarious in terms of why there's two resignations on the board. I think both Melanie and Jeff will complement the existing group of people, and they'll move forward with their mission. And whatever comes out of that committee, just like Parks and Rec, just like public safety, will eventually get to the village board for action and discussion from a governance standpoint, just like it is for every other commission and committee we have. So now, any further comments on the action on, we do have a motion for Melanie Smythe?
Was the original motion was split?
Yeah. So further discussion on Melanie Smythe. Trustee Jan Miller.
I think the complement of candidates that you have here is, is outstanding, and I think we should move forward. We question everything that you bring forward with these talented people. I think we're sending the wrong message to the residents here in Germantown. Thank you.
Further discussion. Trustee Kaminsky.
Do we have any background on these people? I guess everybody else here, I mean, I know Melanie, obviously, but I don't know. Do I know Jeffrey Royer?
Jeff Royer, he's a school board director. He was just elected on the school board.
Okay.
He is a businessperson. He lives in the community.
But see, I would like to see resumes attached to this. I have no idea what I'm voting on, so I'm, I'm gonna like, I don't know what I'm voting on. I know Melanie because she shows up every, every time, but I don't know your background. Something about McDonald's in the past that I remember? But no, I want, I want resumes. I want something attached that we can make reasonable decisions about committee members like we would a plan commission or anything else. Is that wrong?
I think, no, you're not wrong. I think that's a great, great suggestion, and we'll do that going forward, so. So further discussion, yes, Christine Borst.
Do you, President Soderbergh, do you get any sort of like resume or questionnaire just to help educate the general, the general public, whoever's watching, just for the overall process? Because maybe you do get.
I get an application that's filled out, and we could certainly share that with everybody here. I get an email from the clerk's office that the background from the police department has been completed, and that's about it. And then I've got to do my own deep dive in terms of who this person is, whether it's through social media or LinkedIn, that type of thing. I know these people, these two people personally. I think they're very well-qualified. Before we turned the, or before the deadline for accepting applications for the Economic Development Commission, we only received one, one additional citizen that wanted to apply. And again, I looked at that person, and I looked at the two other people, and that's why these two people are on the agenda tonight. It's very simple. It's not that difficult. And again, you know, we have, we have, every April, we have reorganization. That's not to say that these two positions have a longer term, but I feel very comfortable that they'll, they will do a wonderful job for us, moving the mission forward. Trustee Jan Miller.
And I just wanted to make a point. Terry, we, I have never seen an application on an agenda like this where it's an appointment. The only time I saw that was when it was between terms, and then there was an application because it was a special meeting in a special placement. But otherwise, it's, it's at the president's opinion.
Yeah, and I just want to, I just want to reinforce that the personal attacks against fellow trustees has to stop. Has to stop. Whether it's on social media or coming to committee meetings and making public comments, it has to stop if we want to move the Village of Germantown forward. So, trustee Kaminsky.
I feel stupid because I'm not even aware of any of that. So I have a clean slate when it comes to not knowing what you're talking about, which is good.
Okay. Further discussion on the candidate Melanie Smythe to fill a open position on the Economic Development Commission. Saying none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, who said aye? Any opposed? Okay, we got three opposed, that motion carries. We are now, we are now on to Jeffrey Voyer filling the open. We're now on to the next item, Jeffrey Voyer to fill the open position on the Economic Development Commission. And I believe we have a, a motion, because we split it. Do we have discussion, Jeffrey Voyer? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We are now moving on to item eight, consent agenda. Item A, minutes of the September 2nd, 2025 meeting. Item B, budget amendment increasing the 2025 Well 7 rehabilitation capital project by 38,000. Item C, award of the Well Number 7 rehab project to CTW for $114,060 and an authorization to spend the full budget, full project budget. Item, item D, street and park tree pruning project to Crawford Tree and Landscape Services in an amount not to exceed $39,707.45. Service, item E, service contract with Great Lakes for stormwater cleaning and CCTV for $29,975. MMSD work plan for PPI and I in sanitary sewer relay project in Coons Pleasant View subdivision. Item G, state municipal financial agreement for the signals and ITS standalone program for traffic signal and streetlight improvements to the county line road and Appleton Avenue intersection. Item H, application for transfer of combination Class A fermented multiple beverage and intoxicating liquor license for QuickTrip. Item I, memorandum of understanding with the Germantown School District for school resource officers for July 2025 through June 2027. And the last item, item J, soccer club field landscaping project. I'll entertain a motion. Move approval of consent agenda item A through J.
I'll second.
Do we have discussion? Trustee Warren.
Items B as in Bravo through G as in Gulf were approved at Public Works and Highways.
Trustee Peiper.
What's that?
I was, I was wondering if I could pull item D, I have a quick question.
Say that again, please.
I would like to pull item D from consent agenda.
Item C?
D, as a dog.
I apologize. Okay, we could do that. Trustee Cuts.
And just items H and I also went through public safety and were unanimously sent forward.
Okay. Trustee Jan Miller.
I'd like to pull item F for clarification. And also, understand J, that's, I'm, I'm not aware of that.
We could certainly bring people up to have discussion on these items and vote all at one time. Or we could poll things that have different.
I, I just, I have a quick question on item D, that's all.
What's your question on item 10, item D?
Is this the same contractor that we used that butchered our trees?
Yes.
Matt?
Why are we going with them then?
It is the same contractor, it's Crawford. And there's a couple of reasons, I guess, that we're going with them. First is they're a licensed arborist, and we felt that aside from maybe the direction they were given from the consultant and staff on how to go about the pruning project, that they actually conducted it well. So with the process that we went through last year in just reviewing that issue and then developing the comprehensive tree plan, we feel that we'll be able to provide them better direction for a more balanced pruning approach. But the work itself, I think that they followed through and executed.
We have some safeguards in place to make sure that what they did last time is not going to happen this time. Because that was, that was, honestly, it was a shame of, of what happened. It was.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely some safeguards. So the first thing that we'll do, and we do it with, with all of our projects, but we'll make it a point of emphasis with this one, is to hold that pre-construction meeting and go over the expectations in the contract. So that'll include the approach to like how to prune an individual tree. A lot of the concerns that people had last year were with, or two years ago, I should say, is with the kind of unbalanced nature of some of the cuts. So that'll be the biggest thing that, that we'll address. The other concerns were about communication. And the comprehensive tree plan provided an approach that we'll use for communicating with the citizens, so it.
And, and we have a guarantee that they're not going to butcher them like they did last time and just, I mean, they maimed the trees.
I think, I would, I would call it an unbalanced cut. They, they favored pruning on the side of the right-of-way. And part of that pre-construction meeting that we'll hold with the contractor is to ensure that it's a more balanced look and something that accomplishes our goal of raising the canopy and getting the branches off the right-of-way. But also leaving a cut that residents are satisfied with as well. The other, the other thing I would say is that there were, there were two bids on this work. And the other bid was astronomically high. So that's the, the second reason that Crawford is selected here.
I'd still like to, to pull it and have it voted on separately.
We can do that. Trustee Jan Miller.
I was going to, I have concerns as well, because they were subdivisions that are in District 4. So I got a lot of comments from that. But I would like to suggest that we get, we have our first meeting of the tree committee before they engage and make sure that they get our specification for the tree trimming.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we could schedule the meeting. I would still like to get the contract awarded so we can get things in motion to conduct the pruning. It's, you know, it's, I guess, the middle of September already, and the ideal window for pruning is kind of that October, November, December time period. So I would hate to postpone this and delay that work. But I would be happy to schedule the meeting ahead of the work. Part of the specification that was created for the contract that we put out for bid included our specs developed from the comprehensive tree plan on pruning and planting and that sort of stuff. And those are the types of things that we'd reiterate in the pre-construction meeting.
Okay.
So we're going to be pulling item D from the consent agenda. So trustee Jan Miller, do you want to have any further comments on item F? Or do you want to pull that as well?
I, I have a question on F. So Matt, you're right here, so.
What's your question?
My question is, and it is my concern that we had to, you guys filled out a application for the monies that would come back to us for Coons Farm, correct?
Yeah, for the pleasant, Coons Pleasant View subdivision.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, it's not a farm. Pleasant View subdivision. And they currently don't have any water. But on the application, it said possible water. And I would like to, like you do for a lot of the roadwork, send out a letter or to survey to see if anybody in that subdivision wants it. Because what I'm hearing from the residents there, the three, is that they're not interested in having any water, they like their well water.
Yeah, I think we, we presented this project first in the Utility Advisory Committee. And that was intended to kind of workshop the idea, right? So we're in the village, we're, we're planning to do roads. We're planning to potentially do this private lateral project and sewer relay. Doesn't make sense, you know, once in a 30-year period, you're going to have this type of opportunity to do the water at that time. Otherwise, the village kind of misses the boat. So it's a, a decision that the board will have to make. This is, we're kind of moving it forward independent of the water decision. But I will be bringing forward another item in the future to talk about how to address that, that issue with the water. And if it's, the board wants to conduct a survey or to do some other type of outreach to help inform your decision on that, then I think we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. Well, I, I want it pulled and voted on, I think.
Trustee Miller, you, you are on Public Works, aren't you correctly?
I know.
Didn't you vote for this previously?
Yes, but I.
Did you ask this question during Public Works? Shouldn't this question have been asked with the committee you are on?
I'm going over the budget, and I don't see a million dollars anywhere.
You're on Public Works, this was discussed on Public Works, you voted on it at Public Works.
Yes.
Now you're, okay.
Soccer, J.
Do they have something else to say?
If we'll have an opportunity to discuss, was it item F about the Pleasant View subdivision again? Then I can hold my comments for that. Okay.
Your mic's not on.
I speak loud. So we've got, we're pulling item D and F and J. Further discussion. Saying none, roll call vote.
What are we voting on?
Consent agenda.
Yes.
H and I.
Trustee Jan Miller requested to pull J. So we're doing the roll call items minus D, minus F, and minus J. Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Cuts.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Borst. Trustee Peiper.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller. Trustee Kaminsky. President Satterberg.
Aye. That motion carries. We are now on to item D, Street and Park Tree Pruning Project to Crawford Tree and Landscape Services in the amount not to exceed $39,707.45. Matt?
The only other thing I would add that wasn't previously discussed is the comprehensive tree plan that was adopted by the board established a nine-year, which is longer than recommended already, but a nine-year cycle to address tree pruning throughout the village. The recommendations from Arborist would be that you do this on about a seven-year period in order to keep up with all the growth. So I think it's an important thing to continue with. And we got a good bid. We all acknowledged that the project in 2024 didn't go as well as anybody would have hoped. But I think that we've addressed those concerns and will address them with the contractor as the work is happening this year. And would appreciate you awarding the contract tonight.
Move approval of item D as presented. Do we have discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Roll call, it's money.
Thank you, good catch.
For item D, motion by trustee Baum, seconded by Kaminsky, and we're going to do roll call vote for approval. Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Cuts.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Borst.
Aye.
Trustee Peiper. Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Village President Satterberg.
Aye. That motion carries. We're now on to item F, MMSD work plan for a PPI and I and sanitary sewer relay project for Coons Pleasant View subdivision.
Motion to approve.
We have discussion.
So the one thing that I, that I wanted to add on this is that this has gone through the process with Utility Advisory and with Public Works and received the unanimous support. We also need to forward this work plan to MMSD in order to secure the money to fund the project. So we have this guaranteed amount that is accumulated to this point. And then we'll have future allotments that will, because of this work plan, be rolled into a bigger account to address this project in 2028. If we didn't do this tonight, we'd likely miss the deadline and lose out on that funding.
Further discussion, trustee Jan Miller.
And Matt, you said that there, this has nothing to do with water. It's just the sewer and laterals.
Correct.
Okay, bring that up at some other time. Thank you.
Further discussion. Saying none, all those in favor, please say, it's roll call, it's, no, it's not roll call. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Want to oppose, that motion carries. We're now on to item J, soccer club field landscaping project. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
We have discussion. Come on, Gil. Good seeing you.
Basically, what this is, is the soccer club is probably the largest youth program that we have in the village with over 700 kids participating. So fields have become tight. And the soccer club, on their own dime, is willing to work with a professional landscaper. And if you guys are familiar with Friedenfeld, the northeast corner is kind of a bowl area. And it's not used for anything. It doesn't interfere with the trails that are going back there or anything. They're willing to come in and fill that in, landscape it, to create an additional soccer field for our youth. And they have gone through our engineer, Kevin Driscoll. They've filled out applications and presented plans and so forth, and done what they've had to do to be able to do this work. And it was taken before the Parks and Rec Commission back in July, July 16th, and was approved unanimously through the Parks and Rec Commission.
Gil, are there any dollars associated with this?
Yeah. That was my question. So we're, we're not responsible for anything.
No, ma'am.
They're doing this.
Yes, ma'am.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Further discussion. Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on to new business, item A, resolution disallowing the claim of La Shisa Squire.
Before anybody makes a motion, the applicant is here. She was told she's supposed to be here. So I'm not sure if she's supposed to speak on anything, but.
She certainly can if she wants to. We just typically make the recommendation in case there's questions or anything about the claim, that they're here to answer the questions.
If you want to come up and tell us what happened, I would welcome that.
You can talk to me again.
Don't be bashful, come on. Good evening and welcome. Just go to the microphone and press the button and the light, the red light will go off.
So I provided all you guys with the details and the pictures. Had my daughter, I was dropping her off at work. It was a manhole that was uncovered. When I was approaching, it looked like a piece of wood. So first, I went right. The back, the back tire, the front tire, both went into the hole. Lucky for me, I didn't lose control where I could have, wouldn't be standing here, right? So basically, I have a lot of damage on my car from that manhole. So I submitted a claim to see if you guys are willing to assist with the damages that I occur from hitting that manhole that was uncovered. I did. Soon as you guys opened Public Works, I called right away and let them know that it was uncovered. So I don't know what took place after that, but that's why I submitted a claim.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Trustee Baum.
So the manhole cover was off the cover and you drove into the hole? That's a whole different story. That's not what I understood.
Trustee Peiper.
Why? Why was this man cover off? Yeah, I see the picture.
We've got the pictures, yeah.
Why was it off? Do we, do we know?
I, I don't believe anybody knows.
And you can see the, the marks on the pavement.
Oh, yeah, you can see it. That's really heavy to be found, and that'd have to take a couple people.
And this wasn't, it had nothing to do with the flooding event because from my understanding, when you got. when you got a lot of pressure, the manhole covers will pop o- open. Okay.
And we don't know if any work was being performed sewer-wise, water-wise.
Uh, to my understanding, there's nothing that we were able to identify in terms of work that was going on in the area.
It's just a mystery.
Right.
Trustee Kaminsky.
I know typically we have to always say, no, we disallow it, so it goes to the insurance, correct?
Um, yeah, I mean, certainly if we would get sued, for example, then we would typically turn that over to the insurance company, depending on the amount of the claim, um, you know, in terms of what's going on.
Why wouldn't we just turn it over to the insurance company? Remind me of why we are so-
Uh, well, we typically do, uh, initially, and then they will oftentimes come back with a, a, an, an analysis of the particular claim.
Pretty easy analysis on this one.
If they think that there is potential liability on the village's behalf, then they typically will, uh, either pay it or if it's below our deductible, they will just suggest that we pay it. In the event that they do the analysis and they come to the conclusion that there is no, um, exposure, um, they make that recommendation, which is what happened here.
And I would say this is a little bit different than a rock being thrown from a lawnmower striking your vehicle.
I agree. I mean, if this were me and my car, I'd be really-
Trustee Peeper.
Um, okay, you guys all know how I feel about these claims. I've said it many, many times before. This one's different, guys. This is in plain sight. Like, you can't deny these pictures. That is, that is our road. The man cover is off. Whether it was vandalism or not, the man cover is off and we didn't put it back on.
But, but until we have knowledge of the fact that it's not on, um, we don't have
a, a responsibility under the law to, to do that. Well, we know now, yes. Um, and I suspect that the manhole cover is in place as we speak.
Attorney Sajak, you know, you and I could go back and forth on this for days and I'll look up case law and everything and, uh, but I'm not even going to do that. Guys, let's do the right thing this time, please.
And I would say-
Do the right thing.
Ms. Squire, I want to thank you for calling DPW and letting them know that the manhole cover was off and hopefully we replace it right away. And, um, I, I agree with you, trustee Peeper.
And not to mention, this is the first time some acclaimant has actually come in front of us.
Yep. Uh, trustee Rick Miller, I know you had your hand up.
Yeah, um, I didn't see that the packet was complete. I didn't see pictures of the vehicle, the damage, the cost.
The cost, the cost is in there.
So there was an estimate?
Yeah.
Where? It's on, uh, page one-one-three.
It's right on the last-
The last attachment.
Fifty-seven hundred dollars. That's the other one.
Notice of claim.
Sorry.
What I mean, do it, it, that's the estimate from a repair shop? Where am I missing this?
It's the last attachment on the bottom of the page.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You bet.
And I guess, you know, we've got the manhole uncovered and we got a price, but I would hopefully-
Notice of claim.
Going forward, we would get information relative to the actual estimate from the, um, the, the vendor that's going to do the repair work, along with, uh, photos of the vehicle itself, so.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? Cause this, this is-
Put it in the packet.
This is your statement about what the total is. I didn't see an estimate.
Do you have one?
And I didn't see the vehicle.
You have pictures of, of an actual detailed estimate from a car body shop or from a repair shop? Do, do you have pictures that you could pull up of that? Because I, there's-
That is not included in the packet.
He is correct. It was not put into our packet, which it should have been. Yeah, just of, of the estimate of how much it, it's going to cost from-
No, we don't.
Not of the estimate, no.
We don't have the vehicle or the estimate, and I, I mean, I can't approve a claim without-
But if she, but if she has a picture of the estimate from Bob's-
Did we do it?
Yes. That is fine.
We've got to hear.
At Bob's, I, what-
I can speak on this, trustee Peeper. We do actually have the claim and for just, you know, the safety of protecting her information, um, did not include it. Um, and I don't think in the past that they ever did. I'm happy to do so moving forward, but looking at the one from Bob's Main Street, um, and I'm happy to move this as well and forward it to you. The estimate for estimate number two-eight-seven-eight-nine, which is in the claimant's name. And Lelisa Squire, you can tell me if you agree with this amount, but this is what you submitted to my office. Total repair is five-seven-seven-one-point-four-two.
I'm, I'm-
And-
Need to be forwarded with it, obviously. Donna, you're not going to-
Got appropriate documentation.
Yeah.
I'm good.
That's all I was asking is, do we have the documentation? We can't just go on faith that this is what the-
Yeah, the documentation, documentation that was included was just her claim, the total, or I'm sorry, the photos that she received of the damage that she was claiming, and then her certification, um, that this damage was caused by, um, the manhole not being on our road.
And it's detailed in terms of, of road damage, et cetera, and what the repair work needs to be done. So it's very detailed.
Got it.
So.
So are we sending this to our-
Well, right now we've got a, um, it's a resolution disallowing the claim of, uh, Ms. Squire, and so what do we have to do? I think we're in agreement that we want to do the right thing here. It's common sense. So what would the motion be?
Uh, well, if the, if the board wished to pay the claim, then it would be a motion to pay the claim in the amount of whatever it was, fifty-seven-seven.
I'll entertain a motion.
Is it a motion to send it to our insurance company to pay the claim?
It's below our deductible, so we would pay it.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pay the claim for five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-two cents.
Second.
Discussion. I just want to say, you know, it must have really scared you going through that manhole, and I want to thank you so much for doing the right thing and immediately making a phone call to DPW so they could go back and replace it so no one else experiences that. So thank you. Yeah. Right. Further, trustee Baum.
Follow up with?
Um, typically, once the check is ready, um, we'll reach out, let her know the check's ready, and, uh, we'll have her sign a release, um, and exchange that with the check, basically.
She should contact Donna if she has questions.
If she has questions, yes.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye, name. This is funny. Roll call. Yeah.
Get it right in one of these days.
So we are going to be changing item A under new business to say resolution to allow. So you're voting to allow the claim? We're going to start with trustee Warren.
No.
Trustee Cuts.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Jane Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Borst.
Aye.
Trustee Peeper.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. President Soderbergh.
Aye. That motion carries, and again, thank you so much for coming forward. We are now on to item B, Communication and Recording of Public Meetings.
We'll be in touch with you when the check is ready.
Thank you so much. Uh, item B, Communication Recording of Public Meetings. I'm going to turn this over to trustee Jane Miller because this is coming from her.
Thank you. Thank you. So we've been, uh, talking about this for some time and, um, uh, trustee Borst and I got together and we said, uh, this should probably come to, uh, the Villa, uh, GGF and Village Board. So this was previously on, uh, GGF and we voted on it. And, uh, what we'd like to do is, um, take some of the, um, recordings that we currently have. So this is all about communication and recording public meetings. So we put together the cost of our, what we're doing currently and a proposal for recording additional public meetings, um, so that we have basically most of the public meetings, uh, covered and recorded, and it's essential for transparency. Most of the other municipalities do it, and certainly the Germantown School District does it as well. So I attached a spreadsheet that, uh, Gosha Wormspacher put together. Uh, she's our new, um, was it, uh, specialty person, took Aaron Hearn's place, and, um, accumulated a spreadsheet that has the current, uh, hours for Brenton Shrimp, Shimp, who is currently, um, handling all of our, um, recordings. And, um, also, um, estimated, this is rough estimation, uh, adding additional hours, uh, based on the current payroll. So, um, we did pass it with, um, an exception, or I mean, uh, what would you call it, Rick? We, uh, passed the, um, motion to add additional meetings with, um, with consideration.
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Kind of. Um, so, so a couple of things. First off, that, um, Matthew said that we could do some additional funding. Um, we are expecting a little bit more in, uh, from, from the state funding.
Shared services.
Shared revenue than, than we, than was expected in the original one. We don't believe that it's going to be an additional thirty-five hundred dollars. We'd like to phase it in. That was discussed at GGF.
Please.
Um, and for, for most of these meetings, it's going to be a, uh, more of a turn on the camera rather than have an operator, uh, here for the entire meeting and, um, and working the cameras.
Right.
Uh, so this is probably a first step in the whole thing.
Right.
If we approve this, uh, and then we can phase it in as we go.
And, and we're focusing on what committees and commissions?
So the standing committees already have, uh, are recorded and I forgot which ones we are focusing on now. Tourism, Economic Development.
And Joint Review.
Park and Rec.
And Joint Review.
Park.
Park and Rec.
And Park and Rec. That's the one. Joint Review is pretty much already-
We already pretty much do that one.
So we're adding Economic Development Commission, we're adding, um-
Park and Rec.
Park and Rec. Park and Rec, uh, Tourism.
Review.
Tourism.
And Joint, and Joint Review Board if we're not already doing it.
Right. And Tourism.
Well, that's the first phase of this. Um, it's, it's hard to estimate how mu- how much, how many dollars we're going to need for this. Hopefully not much at all if we're just doing a, um, you know, turn the camera on type of thing.
If I, if I could, in order to accomplish this, I think what we'd like to try to do is, um, is to train some additional staff, um, and they're not going to be able to do the things that, that Brenton does, uh, for these village board meetings with switching the camera around and, and, uh, you know, changing shots and all of that. But, um, I think what we'd like to try to do is, is train some additional people to basically turn the cameras on and, and run, you know, run it and, and record the meeting. So that would have, I think, minimal cost, um, you know, probably not as much as, as what was included in the estimate. The, the one thing that I would say in this is, you know, especially for the, the people who are, who are watching the meetings, if, you know, appreciate your patience as we transition this and do this, there is kind of a learning curve for folks. It is a fairly complicated system and, uh, um, you know, even tonight, we had some issues with, uh, with the, uh, the YouTube broadcast and the volume, uh, wasn't working quite right. So there are some things like that that happen that it's going to take folks a little while to, to learn how to troubleshoot those kinds of things.
And, and this action will be, that we will videotape. It's not going to be live. It's not going to be in our, on channel-
This, this would be live.
Live.
This would be live and, and recorded.
Yeah.
Recorded, but-
And, and, and available on channel twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I'm sorry.
Trustee Baum.
You're going to record it? You're going to play it live on channel twenty-five? You're going to record it? How many times is it going to play, how many times are each of these meetings going to play during a week on channel twenty-five?
It'll just play live once.
Yeah.
Um, then it'll be, we, and we record, um, you know, like this meeting is being recorded, uh, while we broadcast it on YouTube, and then those are posted on the village website. So we'll, we'll basically, um, treat this as we are treating the standing committee meetings.
It's, it seems to me that there is a bigger issue at play as to where and how often are we posting stuff? Because I've heard many a times, I don't go out on Facebook. I don't use YouTube. I don't get to see these. I don't have channel twenty-six. I don't get the newspaper. I don't have a computer. I don't have a phone. So what is, is there a policy that we should be putting together as to, these are our official places, these are the number of times they'll be posted? If we're going to put it on channel twenty-five, are we showing it one time only, live? That's it. You can't see it ever again, but if you have YouTube, you can watch it whenever you want.
I mean, it just, basically from the technology perspective, that, that's the, the fact of the matter is that for channel twenty-five, it's, it's broadcast when it's live. It is recorded on YouTube and it's, it's available on the village website, um, afterwards, but we only do this live on channel twenty-five once.
Trustee Jane Miller.
Um, so, uh, it was, uh, everyone agreed. We had a positive response from this at GGF. Uh, we'd like to move forward. And I just want to make a comment about, uh, we need, um, other people to be trained on this, and I would recommend not having the person that's the clerk, in other words, taking the notes. I think there's too much back and forth and you just need somebody that's able to just go in the back and do their job.
Well, and that's where kind of the thought was that, that we would, um, uh, handle this on just basically a, a set it up, get it running and, and not try to do the, the shifts back and forth. Um, you know, that, uh, so it would be the person who is here for the meeting anyways and, and training them to turn the cameras on, um, start the meeting, turn on YouTube, click the record button, um, and, uh, and then turn it off when, when the meeting is complete.
It, it has been totally successful and, uh, just remember that Brenton isn't taking notes or anything. He's just manning that area, so.
I'm, I'm confident that based on board action, staff-
They will figure it out.
Plan going forward. Trustee Warren.
So how, um, why weren't these committees being videotaped or televised to begin with?
Well, village, village board policy in the past has been that the, um, uh, the village board meetings, the plan commission meetings, and the three, um, standing committees were, were broadcast and, um, and, and recorded and posted. So, so that's what we've done in the past. I think what, what has changed, uh, that makes it a little bit more feasible to do this is, um, one, we do have more experience and more expertise with the technology, and I think we're, we're able to do that. I think, secondly, um, like in the case of Economic Development Commission and Tourism, those had previously been like ad hoc meetings or wasn't a regular schedule, which made it more difficult to try to coordinate and having somebody who was able to do this, you know, available to do it. Now, now Tourism and Economic Development have a regular meeting, so we can schedule somebody and, and not, you know, as was the past, like with Tourism, for example, we'd get a request in and, okay, next, next Wednesday, we're having a meeting. So now trying to find who's of, you know, who's available that knows how to operate the cameras and can, can, can do that. So I think that, that, that makes it a little bit more feasible.
I share the same concerns that trustee Baum has. They can have all the recordings out there, but if they don't know where to find it or how to do it, or, you know, it's not going to help so much for accessibility in that. Plus we're spending more money when we're trying to make cuts too, so, I don't know. It just seems so much after the fact for the little value that we would get out of it.
Yeah, I think this is, uh, great in the spirit of transparency. Uh, the more transparent we are, uh, nominal cost, I think it's wonderful, so. So Jan, do you want to, uh, make a motion to, I think we're adding three, bringing Park and Rec, uh, Joint Review Board, uh, Tourism and Economic Development? Or?
Hold on just a moment, because I have the notes from GGF motion as well. So we have, from, from General Government and Finance meeting, it was Park and Rec.
From the earlier meeting, we have the motion that was made and it was to- It was for Park and Recreation, Economic Development and Tourism. Those were the three discussed to integrate in.
And I believe that there was discussion on Joint Review Board and the- And I believe that there was discussion on Joint Review Board, and the conversation pivoted back and forth, that we feel comfortable that we are recording it, but I just want to make sure that we're capturing that as well. So in the unlikely event that we're not, so, because it's not one of the three standing committees. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I, I misspoke. The village clerk is correct, though. It was Economic Development, Tourism, Park and Rec, and we, by and large, have been broadcasting and recording the Joint Review Board meetings in the past year or so.
And whether or not people, we, we will have the content available, whether or not people will go there and look at it, that's up to them. But I think this is, we're going down the right path here from a transparency standpoint, so, and making all the meetings accessible. Now, whether or not people actually go on there and look at it, we can't control that, so.
Okay.
So make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Communication and Recording of Public Meetings for Park and Rec, Economic Development Commission, and Tourism Commission.
Second.
We have discussion. Yes, sir. Yeah, one discussion is, I, I asked Matthew Uselding to look up the policy, if it's a policy or municipal code, I think it's just a policy, isn't it?
I have that answer as well.
Yeah.
If you'd like.
Please.
Thank you.
Aye, but you can read it.
So actually, Finance Director Uselding was able to just send me a message, and he was hoping that I would get to pass this along, so I will pull up what his findings It just says that he was not able to find a written policy, as there may not be one. I did find that the previous administrator update regarding the broadcasting of meetings, however, if I found the policy, we will be sore to pass that along. So no policy that was found by him specifically, and as I was doing research as well during the meeting, I was unable to locate that policy also.
Right, so my point is that this is probably just a guideline right now, and I think that we need to create a policy for this as well with, along with, along with this motion. Yep.
Agreed. Do you want to make an amendment to the motion?
You can expand your motion.
Or I'll, I'll just expand it, and then make sure that as we expand the recording of the public meetings, make sure we have a policy that is actually written to support it.
And we had a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion. Say none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye to oppose. That motion carries, and we are, do not have any further business, so we are adjourned at 8:37 PM. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, and please drive home safe.